I'm gonna make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I need to move, second motion to pay the bills.
Paul Hall, Mr. Cottin?
Yes.
Yes, this is the decision, yes. We have the June bank statements. They're balanced from last month, everything was fine and you guys don't just initiate this one. Okay, I've got two deeds for East Ocean Cemetery, old section, being transferred. One's from Jamie Verley and one's from Dave and Nancy Bayless, being transferred to Greg Spencer. There's gotta be conversation later about Hughes' contract and they did the paving over on Diagonal Road, but Edith sent me a bill, but also a note, and said, "Just wanna thank you for your work this season. The road ended up with all the patch work being wider than what was bid by a total of about 1,100 square yards. I did not charge you for the extra yardage. It's always nice to work with a township that works together with us. Your road superintendent is always first class. You are lucky to have a good employee who cares about your township roads. I come across some of them that do not care, they're just in training time." I thought that was a nice compliment to Jim.
I don't think he's a superintendent yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, Jim, I know you do, you do the greatest job out there with them, you work well with everybody that's on track with us.
You'll, you'll come back and... Okay, Jim?
Uh, June totals, we put 1,233 miles on trucks, used 302 gallons of fuel, put 135 tons of 404 asphalt down, we had one burial. Uh, second round of mowings done, about ready to start the third as wet as it's been actually. Uh, we're about 90% done patching, I got Tyler Road that needs some attention yet, but it needs some, I need to dig out, cut out and dig out some spots on it. The farm traffic's pretty rough on that stretch of road too, so. And Diagonal Road was chipped last Friday. And as of right now, rough totals from the last two years on Diagonal Road, material and labor, we had about $114,000 in that stretch of road. With the drainage we put in and the chipping seal this year and stone and everything else we got in it. That's all I have.
Paul was supposed to be here, uh, I got, did get a message from, uh, Eric, that he's working right, and Paul was supposed to bring it in, so.
Paul?
I just, I gave you the sheets on our tires for heat, um, tag right where they're in, uh, we need to, we need to go up with some pictures as soon as possible, because I need to get flyers made up and get them out. So, I'm not, I should set up a time when you can all get together, I think Tom ought to get involved, because he's, you know, familiar with numbers like that, and, uh, two, four, there are pretty, there are lots of people that have it, but I need some, I need some pictures to go on, so he can make a plot and get them out. Don't forget, this is, this is Oklahoma County wide, we're only working three. They already had one to the belly, so I'm not sure what else is happening.
At the meeting, uh, first of the week, they didn't have the results of that one, and that's why I can't tell you.
But they have another, besides ours, somewhere sometime, I'm not sure when that happens, but I think we need to be prepared, uh, to try to tell what, what kind of turnout we're gonna have, since, uh, there's only three, could have been all dishes.
Yeah, basically, we're...
We might be, we might be diluted entirely.
Yeah, we're covering, basically, the west half of town, basically.
Yeah, so I, I kinda need some figures there, so I can get that flyer, get some flyers on it. And, uh, I was wondering, maybe we should dilute them, now we've had up to 50. I don't know, that seems like a bunch.
I was talking with Lou about that, he called me before they put the one on, they had, one who knows where our limitations, how we've done in the past, and I says, "We were talking about making a change, because we've had so many for our limits before," he suggested going to 10, like, because they basically come back to four, or they did.
Some of them say, "Why are you bringing so many, it's free."
Yeah.
And that's what, I don't know if we wanna get into that.
Yeah, his, his was four, three, and then they went to the dollar, whatever the charge, full charge rate was, or anything above that, and then they still don't know how many of those they were taking, and...
Well, I think that'll help me.
Yeah, I mean, discuss that, but, uh, yeah, I think that to make sure that we don't hurt ourselves, the ones that we give a discounted rate on, we've gotta really watch how many of them we're gonna take, so.
Yeah, there's a couple areas, I'm not quite sure what, what a semi tire is versus, where's the brake, six colias, is that the semi brake?
Basically, uh, I think, then last year, they, they bring it to 20 inch and below.
Also 22 inch.
Okay, I couldn't remember what it was, so.
Cause we, I know last year, we turned some 20, it was like a big pickup tire, that has 20, we turned some of them away, because they didn't wanna pay the semi, my late uncle's.
Yeah, because there's a big difference in price.
Yeah, but there's also, you know, you take a pickup tire, I don't know, we'll say 40 pound, and a semi tire's gonna be 80 pound, uh, I don't know what the weight of them.
The, I was showing you on the price sheet, there's one 22 on passenger tires, so I guess he must go by the flies, before the rolls done. He'd go 20 inch, we're, from the semi side, then it would fall on the left side.
Right.
It must be going by flies, but also if you don't break that long.
But, you know, like, a 20 inch truck tire is, I mean, pickup truck tire, you can, there's huge weight differences.
Right, right.
But some of these newer cars, you know, those 22s, 24s?
Yeah, and so you can't just go by the size, you gotta go by... Of course, there's a little profile.
Right.
We have, and have recent drivers, just, they're trying, but since it's a time line table, they, they may become, I don't know what to expect.
Yeah, what you discussed is, I don't know if you're gonna rush out right after the meeting, or...
Take the minutes.
Take the minutes, go over, try and come up with something here tonight, and certainly play it out.
I have one other question, uh, I don't know if we should put, go on the flyer, no dealers. Is that a concern or not? I think it was, but maybe you considered the overall picture of things, it wasn't. I just thought, we were taking advantage, but one of our little dealers, and I, I mean, think that was right, but the, the two guys were taking that time.
And, again, all the counties, other counties coming up, said, "John, they stipulated no dealers on that already," so.
So, okay, if I put that on there?
I think...
Probably the only thing I would say, you know, I'd let them break...
We're cutting the minimum back, I think that would keep the dealers out of, I would say.
Cause it, um, if you put a minimum on it, I, I really wouldn't care if the dealer, you know, so long he don't start sending every one of his workers with him.
He'd be paying the full rate.
Right.
I mean, he could bring the money he wants to bring, because it's more tonnage for us at the end of the year, so. You gotta look at that side of it too, the whole amount of his money, I don't care how many tires we get, so.
And you take the minimum, uh, cover that.
I think that would...
I, I mean, you know, we, we'll say we limit it, we'll say 10, you know, I think we all know, two of the employees, for sure there is a third one there, isn't there?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I think, I think they will be okay with that, we'll discuss that too, one of the prices, so.
Chief? I am the acting chief this week, yes. Hey, I'm calling for, uh, chief's vacation this week. Um, for the month of June, we put a total of 7,049 miles on all the cars. Um, we had a total of, you know, 409 calls for the month of June, or events, basically. Uh, basically consisting of 227 business checks, 46 residence checks, 81 traffic stops, and various others. Um, a couple letters, chief wanted me to, uh, read, uh, these are basically just from a couple, a couple citizens here in the township that are thanking us for, for duties here. One was from a deputy, Debbie Courtney, uh, she basically just thanking us for helping her out during a medical call. Got there, um, she was unconscious there, and we basically got her to the hospital, so she was very happy that we helped her out with that. And, second one is from a Bruce in Claudia Barrett, they were just basically thanking us that we checked their house, uh, while they're on vacation, everything come out fine, we were checking every day, they had no issues, so they just wanted basically thanked us and honored us for that. That's pretty much all that we got, don't have much.
Let's see him.
I knew who it was, but I just... You're a doctor?
I'm also a doctor.
I was gonna say, you look like a doctor.
I'm guessing Danny signs enough things now that...
Yeah.
He, he's got his signature.
Yeah, he's got it down there, so. All right, you're up, so.
Hello, everybody, I'm, sorry, everybody here knows where I am, Danny Burton, I'm still right down the street here. And probably most of you know why I'm here, uh, I've had a string of burglaries and things that I've done, down in Old Man's Place, which, you know, I live right behind it. I'm just a bit concerned with, you know, about how it's getting handled and what we can do in the future to remedy the problem. You know, our police force here, they do an excellent job of, you know, catching speeders and DUIs and things like that, and, you know, you can talk to anybody in the tri-county area, nobody drives through here drunk, and nobody speeds through here, which, which I'm appreciative of, because, you know, I don't drink and drive, and I, I've got four little girls, and I don't wanna be drinking and driving on the streets, but, uh, you know, and he just stated that the problems they have this month, and as you seen, he didn't even bring it up, that I'm on my seventh stolen vehicle down there, and yet to have anybody, anybody apprehended over it. I, I feel that it's, you know, a bit of a concern, um, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm overthinking, maybe it's not as big a deal as I, I think it is, but, you know, when somebody's walking in somebody else's house and taking the keys off their dresser, uh, somebody's bound to get hurt eventually. And how my old man walked on steps, had he not, you know, he can sleep through a tornado, but an average person would have heard that, heard somebody coming in their house, would have went down there, you know, then there'd been a gunfight and a whole, whole different ballgame, and, you know, he may have been dead, or it might have been investigative murder, or whatever. I, I think there needs to be some asset reallocation here, and maybe, maybe we're putting too much money and effort into having patrol officers sit at every corner to catch somebody for speeding. You know, my employees have been pulled over and taken, they've been 10 over, but yet, you know, we can't get a guy who's, you know, lost seven vehicles, seven title vehicles, um, from an acre mile from the police station. And I'm not bad enough, I'm really not, because I think you guys do an excellent job, but I, I think that there needs to be some more effort put forth to serious crimes, because when I grew up here, I've been here my whole life down here, we didn't lock the house, we didn't lock the keys, we didn't, keys were in the cars, it just might come over near the bars, and make a bar, and we'd do it, come back. And at this time, I don't walk in the damn house, I'll take my keys with me. And I don't walk out of my house without a gun in my hand, and I'm just, it shouldn't have to be like that in Goshen Township, we don't live in the Bronx, so.
Thing is, that's society, I mean, it's not just rich in township, the society is changing, I fully agree with you, I mean, we've all been around, we live, we live keys to vehicles, without someone's lock, you worry about a thing, and it's just a different society, it's day and age, and, uh, I mean...
Do you think that's an average percentage of, of, part of that sort of song, zero of seven?
Well, I think there's some issues that we need to look at, and we've discussed this, and I haven't been fully involved with it to the last week or so, we've had some discussion, I guess, some calls been made and so forth, so brought things up to our attention, but, uh, you know, when you're on the outside, and I'm not a police officer, so I can't say I'm still on the outside too, but sometimes you think it's a lot easier to catch a thief than it is, I mean, we've had a lot of stuff that we've caught over Green and this way, I mean, other stuff, not a lot of the stuff, but, you know, some floor viewers, uh, tools, a couple like this, and, yeah, it's spread out for a few months, and then all of a sudden, you get some leads, and there's one group did multiple things in multiple areas, and, or that's to do with yours down here, I mean, it just seems like there's an extra amount that's happening in one location.
Well, I just mentioned vehicles, I didn't bring up the two guns and the multiple tools and everything else, it's, I'm just talking grant at that bottom here, that's...
Yeah, and, uh, you know, yeah, I think we need to really push this issue, but we've got a couple of good detectives on the northies. Again, for your, for your finds and leads, you gotta have something, there's gotta be a straw, you can grab and get a little information, I mean, there's ten drivers out here, and I, again, I know the tactic, I'm just thinking to myself, oh, I feel, you know, you guys can say your voice on it too.
I, our, our point of view, we wanted, um, we do have Bureau of Criminal Investigations involved, and that's their statewide, just to, we do all investigations in the state of Ohio, they came out, did the fingerprint, they have, the vehicle's put in the leaves, um, you know, unfortunately, when a vehicle is stolen, okay, we have to wait until that vehicle is found, in order to get a lead back from that, or to get a witness, or to get somebody, somebody admitted to doing it. Our detectives have been talking to Canton, Canton PD, they've been talking to Lyons PD, we've checked all their surrounding gas stations, we're trying to find, trying to find, if we can see if the vehicle has been taken that evening, wet and about gas, because I believe the vehicle was unemptied that night, I believe you guys know what's that. Um, so we checked all the surrounding gas stations, we checked all the videos, nothing was found, okay, so, um, you know, it's all pertaining to one area, it's all, they're all, all the vehicles seem to be going up towards one area, and we are focusing on that right now. There's a certain person of, of interest we're looking at, we've actually spoken with that person's relatives, and we're gonna be bringing them in probably later in the week, again, for a second interview, we're already interviewed once, and we're working on a second interview now. The problem is, though, is if they don't admit to it, we don't have fingerprints, we didn't see them doing it, there's only so much we can do. And I totally understand what you, I work midnights, I'm a midnight guy, I've been midnight guy for a long time, we check all the residences, we're up and down probably Burke's house, probably 20 times a night. The thing is, though, you know, it happens within a five minute period, we can't see every single time.
Right, I understand, my guys come in and...
And I understand that, and there again, you know, initially, there's, there's a common derivative here, where all of them are happening at that residence, so there's something we need to look at there, because we're not having them happen on West Reserve, we're not having them happen on 62 or 14, we're finding all of the auto stuffs there, so there's, there's a common problem there, that we need to figure out what it is, and we're working on that.
What, what do I do in the meantime?
Well, you know, honestly, I, I hate this alarm, locking up the house. Because both times, the house is unlocked.
Right, but, you know, I do that in my house, and I...
I live in Canton, and I have, I have to have alarms, I mean, it happens, I mean, people breaking into houses constantly, Canton, Canton, it's just as good as an apartment as we are, and they are everywhere, all the time, and it happens. And unfortunately, you know, auto theft, we don't have constantly, that's, we haven't had an auto theft in, Dr. Beck, how long? It's been a long time since we've had an auto theft out here, with your guys, I mean, I've been here for over three years, going on tour, and up until this one, there wasn't one single time that I've been, been employed here.
Sorry, is there been any other one besides mine at all?
Not others, not others, no, honestly, there's been none of this, either, either townships, Goshen Township, or Green, or Malloy, we've had zero. So, there's, there's a problem here that we need to look at, and we've spoken with your dad, and he's kinda giving us an idea of what he thinks might be going on, but we need to do an investigation to find that out, but it takes a little bit of time, and he understands that, and, you know, we're doing the very best, I mean, we have him on it, there's the BCI's on it, we're not just throwing this under the rug, because it's very important, it's a, it's a, a limelight on us right now too, because we're the ones that's all doing it, and so, we wanna make sure everybody's happy out there, we're doing everything we possibly can to take care of it.
That's, that's what I wanted to get clear of, what's, what's the...
We ain't, we ain't pushing it underneath the rug, it's something very important, he's, he's so...
I just want to... I'm taking myself off the road, patrol lots of things to just focus on. That's a natural, that's one issue I had, is, are we allocating, you know, 12 officers to road patrol and two to...
We gotta understand, we're out on the road, but, but we're out in the country setting, you know, we can patrol all night long, which we do, but, you know, eight hours on a country setting on a midnight turn, you have to look for drunks, you have to look for speeders, because you can drive around for eight hours, and put on 500 miles on a park, you can't do that, so we have to sit, run some traffic, run some radar, because there's people, two driving drunk, there's people doing things, and, you know, people speeding, that's another way of getting, you know, getting a theft, it's very easy to stop a vehicle, and say, "Hey, they're leaving the house," you never know, but we do our residence checks, that's another important thing, we do, you know, residence checks even evening, you know, if you folks want us to start doing residence checks for you guys, even if you guys are there, we'll have no problem driving through your residence in the evening, spotlight stuff, drive on, it takes us five minutes, we have no problem doing that. If that's something, you know, Jim wants us to do, we have no problem with doing it, we'll do, we'll, we'll check the business every night, it takes five minutes literally for us to check the business, we'll do it periodically, you know what I mean, we won't do it at the same time, but, as I said, we're open to suggestions, if you want us to help us out, help you out in any of the ways, we can do it, but, everything we are doing right now, we're, we have a full force of armed, we're open to it.
I appreciate you on. Thanks.
Calling BCI in, Danny, was probably one of the best things that they did, because those guys are, they're trained for evidence collection, as far as a fingerprint, or any other evidence that it may be, so if they're calling BCI in, there's a better chance that there is gonna be fingerprints, whatever, they're gonna be, be able to do, I'm not trying to knock our guys, but our guys try to do a little bit of everything, there's guys in BCI that collect evidence, that's all they do, so, they made the right move by calling BCI in to try to collect any evidence that there is, because that's those guys' specialty, and that's what they're trained for.
Right, and the technology is special.
Right.
I don't want you to, I don't want anybody to take us like I'm bashing the police station, I just don't want it to go away, and...
I just didn't think, you probably just took it back over the door.
Well, no, I don't... I don't think it's funny, but, you know, I, I, my, my wife's worried about being outside when I'm not home, I just don't wanna live like that.
This is a safe community, it really, really is, honestly, I mean, I was a deputy sheriff for a few years, and I worked in my own county, Youngstown, that, it's completely different, you know, we're not comparing this to Youngstown in any way, I mean, quick, this is a very safe community out here, I also, I'm also a police officer, I'm East Palestine, and you wanna talk, talk about crime, that's where the crime is, and we have problems out there, out here, we don't have hardly anything, and we, it's because I think we're a very good department, we really focus on it, and there's gonna be times where we have problems, but we, we try to focus on it as much as we possibly can. Don't you feel, Danny, the majority of this has happened during about the same hours at night, so, I mean...
I, I know who did it, there's not a doubt of mine, it's apprehending who did it, is what I'm concerned about.
Have you got night cams up there?
What's that?
You got night cams?
No, I, I didn't do that, because I talked to several people that did it, and, you know, to get a good system, it's about $10,000, and, uh, I talked to two people who, devil's Columbia County Sheriff, and had people on the night cameras, and they said it wasn't enough evidence to, to go forward with it. Uh, they actually had a truck, the person sitting in the truck, it was really benign, I'll tell you, it was, they had a bunch of stuff stolen from them, um, and they said it was circumstantial, and they couldn't prove who exactly it was in the car, so, I didn't see the sense in wasting money on it. Everybody tells me to put a fence up, and now I'm fencing my old man's property, and, you know, I've already taken it over, I hate to put a fence around him.
Technically, you have, you gotta walk the gate when you leave at night, two days to take you out.
A couple mean dogs, weren't, boys that don't bite somebody are in trouble.
Yeah, yeah, male people don't like that, don't eat that.
So, I guess that's, that's, me and Jim are looking at as a way to strategically fence something off, where we can park things that are stealable behind the fence, but, you know, I just think...
And your thesis is gonna be pretty hard to do, Danny, I mean, you know, Jim's pickup don't usually sit where the rest of the employees dig it will sit.
And, you know, that's a good deterrent, but it still doesn't work all the time, I was in a towing business for how many years, my first inbound lot was behind Patterson's, well lit, place protection in Salem, in Perry, run that area all the time, had a bug run there, into a vehicle, I should drive it right through the gates and drive it out. My other lot on Allen Road, same thing, I've had three, four trucks over a five-year period, stole a lot of there, and they, they actually come in with bolt cutters, cut the chain length fence, open it up, drove right through, and, then you can deter it, but you can't stop it, just...
The other thing that makes it difficult is if there's two, and somebody's dropping one off, you know, it just, it not takes a second for somebody to jump out of the car,
Then you can't see them, right.
Exactly, yeah.
It's just a very frustrating feeling, worrying every night, what are they gonna steal, they gonna steal radio, they gonna break the windows out of cars, whatever.
Yeah, Mike says last time, we all know they entered the house, and, you know, a couple of them, other vehicles, the keys were in the vehicle, weren't there?
Right, yeah.
But this time, they...
Yeah, they, yeah, they live in houses, and that's, we had suspicions last time who it might be, this time, pretty much settled it, but...
Well, yes.
Yeah, I know it's ongoing, so, you know, I just, I just wanna be assured that something is gonna be resolved, that we're gonna keep handling at it.
We are, yeah.
I just don't, I just don't wanna just every, you know, always wonder what's gonna happen that night.
I don't know, on cost, Danny, like, some of these motion lights, you know, your employees would know, would that, I don't know if that would help any at all with them?
I don't know either, to be honest with you, um, you know, a lot of times, if they're gonna do something, they'll always unscrew the lights.
How much detail would you need in a camera system, in honesty, is that, is that approved?
You know, honestly, you know, $10,000 is a little extreme, because a family member of mine actually does alarms, and, um, you can get a decent system for probably $1,000, $400 bucks, for a closed area, in a certain area.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem, we have a...
If you have a big area, if you're gonna surround the whole property, then you're probably gonna be talking that kinda money, but if you have a certain area you're trying to focus on, you probably would get a pretty detailed system for about $1,000, because I actually have cameras inside of my house, and I watch the inside of my house, um, it's actually fairly reasonable, it looks, I can go right onto my iPhone, what I have going on in my house, and it's not expensive at all.
Maybe give one a focus on the driveway, though.
You could, exactly, yeah, in certain areas, you know, because I'd holler it out, you never know, they could drive through the field, but most likely, they're gonna take the easiest way out.
There is people out there that have, like, what is, is it SOS, is that what?
Yes, yeah.
They put that sign out there.
That, that does do a lot of, a lot of trouble, so...
And they, they have no system, that, that, for some people, yes.
Huh? What mean dogs will kill a lot of lives? Oh, again, I got four little kids running around, that's, and I have to kill them.
Yeah.
And I have to kill them.
They're not back there, though. You know, I understand what you're saying. Depending on dogs, that's a great thing.
That bites somebody and then you need to go off.
You're on your property, huh?
Petting them off before somebody gets it.
Yeah, real mean dog.
All right, well, we'll keep working on it, so...okay, because we got one bid here for a truck. On the other side, they're submitting a bid of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the truck. Grand horse. This time, we made the motion, and we accept the bid on the truck, and the grand horse.
Our second.
Call vote, uh...Mr. McCraven?
Yes.
Sign me.
Yes, please, yes.
Tom will handle the title and everything with that for you. Uh, we will give you a copy of the title tonight, and until check or whatever you brought to pay for clears, then on that, then we'll send you the original title, so...have time to stick around, or do you want to handle it now so you can get out of here, or...we've got another half hour to go into the meeting here, so...we'll try to make the interaction quick.
It's hard. On the second of July, I went up to East State for the District Six Public Works Program. I picked up our application packet. If we apply for a project before we can submit our application, we have to turn on updated inventory. Uh, that has to be done every five years, and we need to see that's the... Um, I don't know how you guys feel, but I was wondering if you maybe want to set a work line up, maybe in a couple weeks, and try to get some ideas that we'd like to submit. And we started on it because the application deadline is the fifth of September, and I need to wait till the next meeting and try to rush everybody.
Right.
And we don't have to have a meeting, we just have a work line where we clear out some ideas and decide what direction we're going to head in.
With the program this year, have they changed anything? Do we still have to have a safety issue?
Uh, you get more...you get more points if it's for the safety issue. They're pushing pretty hard for infrastructure repairs for seniors, grandchildren, daughters, and stuff like that. Uh, I think we have to...they recommend you to keep reaching in constantly to find the son of a brother. Um, I don't want to join that experience.
I...that's why I thought it's pretty much where it's been. I know they've changed. I see like Columbia County gets a lot of their townships go through.
Yeah.
Paying, and so they can always get them. Mahoney County gets there seemed to get that, and, uh, except for the county side of it.
Right.
And, uh, it's the same way, I mean, probably maybe push for...what we started trying to do in the mask, or whatever. We've never gone for that side right on the roof yet, so, uh, it might be something worth this, so, yeah.
When I was up there, I asked about, what is that the real money that would be...really be eligible for as far as helping us out with the building here? There was nothing through East State, but I talked with Kathy Zuck from the Appalachian region council, and through ARC, there's a chance that we could be eligible for money towards the week before. She said we could see possibly up to thirty thousand dollars. There's no funds available at this time. She says to contact again in August because theoretically, when it does become available. But the biggest thing that's going to help us if we go that route is going to be the fact that the health department comes in here for the health clinics, and what comes in here, because that's one of the things that they really geared towards is affordable healthcare for people in the Appalachian regions. Uh, I've been working on getting some contacts from YSC, I should have an update on that by the next meeting, a lot of the information, as far as what...more help they want to give us and what we can do. But also, on the, uh, I'm not going to know the date was, but I went to the public hearing for the sales tax for the county. Basically, what they're going to do is if the sales tax passes now, that money's going to go directly to criminal justice, which is through the sheriff's department. That's going to free up money from the sheriff's department, which is going to be sure as part of that, it can be used for other areas of the county. Uh, the one...the biggest problem YSC wasn't trying to pass it was people in that because of the condition of the roads, so...but the thing is, regardless whether the sales tax passes or not, it's not going to have any bearing on how many raids get fixed, because the money that comes into the engineer's office to fix the wages through a permitted license tax and through the gasoline tax. So whether it's sales tax passes or doesn't pass, it's not going to affect which one on the raids in the county. Personally, I feel the sales tax is kind of fair because you get people that come from Columbia County or Spark County or whatever, if they're buying anything from Columbia County, they're paying the tax also. To me, it's more...it's a more fair tax than the levy that's put on your personal property because you put the bill for that with the sales tax, especially with the way Cina coming in, you're going to have a lot more people from the other area that are coming in. Now to get back on the ballot in, um, November.
I believe that the existing tax doesn't end until the fifteenth, is that correct?
I believe so.
So they...they can get it on again, yet it still be okay if it never be passed, I guess, so...
And the only other thing we need to, uh, to...so, kind of, we're going to deal about the third raids issue because it's only a month and a half away, so, yeah, if anybody can help, try to get some other pictures. People that I seen the night, uh, yesterday, or something do, if somebody can help us get some other pictures, I think that'd be good. And that's all that I have.
Right. Uh, the only thing I got, uh, driving around the township a little bit, a fellow built a new house, garage, shop, I don't know what it's going to call, over on Garfield Road. Uh, he's got an address of ten thousand, one one one. Now, if something happens there, that's going to come up Green Township, I think. And I don't know where he...I don't think he gave you that number.
Now, what's happened is the enhanced nine-one-one, they are now doing house numbers. Uh, Tom and I were here when someone came in, and what they're doing is they're going on the computer looking at satellite, image of the property, and they've been assigning the house numbers because we haven't had anybody contact us about a house number in probably a year and a half.
Where'd you get that house number? Was it on the box?
Yeah, it's on his mailbox post, because the next one to the east is thirteen, one fifty-six. Now, I can't tell. And if you cite across country, uh, probably everybody knows where Lester Barner lives, his is thirteen, two eighty-six. I guess my main concern, if something happens there and they come up with this address, we're going to probably notify Green Township.
Where did he get that address?
I don't know.
Because I think he made it up himself, because I don't think he...I know he didn't come to us for it.
No, well, I'm thinking he went to my county.
I don't think nine-one-one would have given him that number because it wouldn't fit their scenario.
I'm thinking he got it when he got a building from it.
Yeah, they had to have an address for the building from it.
Right.
Were they...were they giving the address for the building?
I don't know. I know the phenomenon, one of those addresses. That's always been my concern because I was down physically, I didn't see where the ground was going, where the house was going to be, and they took this corresponding, like the other addresses, and now it's going to be known from the map from the computer, which computers are great, but sometimes they're still going to go after them and verify.
It's something we need to work into because we had this issue on Secrush Road, you know, over the years, and...
No, Secrush, well...
Don't let Tom worry.
No. My friend, the straddle, that's the...
Mahoney County gave me my address.
What's that?
The building department in Mahoney County, I got my family's, you know, address, and you got sent, they shouldn't have done that.
Right, and that's what we've been fighting for several years here, and we thought we had it handled, and then with this new system, and...which was a great idea if it would have worked, but here it shows it's not going to work.
Well, I don't think...
Well, it may have worked, but the building department's sending out numbers, uh, really different from all...
Well, the other thing, we don't know if this fellow maybe say, yeah, this is my place right here, and maybe looked at something wrong, I don't know. You know, whether it's a medical call, a fire call, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, whatever it is, it's going to do things up in the system because, yeah, it's going to shore it off when any emergency call comes.
Right.
So, you know, I think it's something we need to work into, whether we can straighten that one out or not, but before any more happen.
They have it, they have it straightened out. It's way out of line.
Yeah.
Mahoney County never get there, right?
Who's shopping with...
Uh, it's one of Larry Lotenheiser's boys. And I don't know if it's Jared or Mitt.
Jared.
Jared?
It's Jared. It's his house.
Huh?
That's his house.
That's his house.
That's where he lives.
If that's what you want to call it, okay.
No, seriously, that's what it is. It's his house, where he lives.
I do not know Jared. I do know Larry.
No? You ready?
Yep.
Three, three, zero, five, six, five, three, zero, four, six.
Three, zero, four, six? Thank you.
That's his...that's his Harley Davidson house.
Right.
We didn't ask the question when we heard of these, but that's...
Yeah, I know Larry pretty good. I need to try to stop over there, call there, find out where he got, you know.
It'd be good to find out, just like in your instance, if you called in and threw out that address to someone that wasn't available for you to have, you would run out small numbers, trying to find...
And we...my...the guy who was building my house actually got my address, and he just got it off in Mahoney County.
Yeah.
And then you, I think you stopped and asked him where I got it from. Somebody did, but...
How close is it to Larry and Joanne? Is...I mean...
The driveway?
Well, no, your house number...
Oh, you know, I don't know their address.
Okay, I was just curious.
As soon as I got it, approximately.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't...I don't know. I don't know where they got the number, or...
Okay.
Kind of catchy, I guess, but...
The way the new mapping system works is they take a mile and they break it down into fifty-two point eight feet, a hundred times, and then they cite it on the, uh, on the map, and they figure out where your driveway is, and then they implement between this guy and this guy and try to get you in the ballpark with the right number, so...that's how they're doing it now with Saddle.
I'll tell you my...okay, uh, Potterosa Park, uh, is of...this morning, when I called, uh, nothing had transpired on the final paperwork on that yet, so I'll carry that update until next meeting. Armstrong, uh, Cable, uh, we have to do a new resolution. We all under one resolution with them for the township, the prosecutors, over the ruling that we had to change the wording, and, uh, so basically the fees and everything stay the same, it's just wording and...new resolution. Uh, was there any different wording that they got, or not?
No, I mean, I just copied what the prosecutor gave us, copied it and put our name in it, Goshen Township, wherever, and, uh, it's resolution twenty-fourteen oh seven, fourteen A. It's, uh, establishing a video service provider fee. You guys will vote after all, I have the opportunity to read this ahead of time, and, uh, if you pass it, you need to sign.
I'll make a motion that, uh, the resolution is stated, uh, to accept that one.
I'll accept the resolution. We'll call vote, Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Behind you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and the last meeting, we had Sean Logan here, uh, about the gas, not for gas aggregation, uh, resolution, and we...that was approved by the prosecutor's office, so I think what I think needed to change was the word clerk needed to change to fiscal office, so...
My apologies, Tom.
There's no clerks anymore.
I didn't realize that was happening.
Yeah, so, was anyone picked up on, or we don't have a clock?
Wow.
Tom and I were talking today, we did have a couple questions. Uh, number one, as we discussed, I worked my first at Columbia Talk, you basically handle all the paperwork and any cost to the Board of Elections to put this in the ballot, is that correct?
Well, you would, uh, the township would have to get the paper we're talking about was what needs to be filed with the PUCO.
Okay.
If the voters approve it and you join NOPEC.
Now, is there a form, a standard form that you have, you're using for us to take to the Board of Elections? Is that...
But if there are fees that you have to incur and you join NOPEC, uh, after the vote, after you have the authority and you join NOPEC, they will reimburse you for any or pay any fees associated with going to the ballot.
Yeah, so, actually, in a long way, there's no cost to township.
I've heard different stories. I guess it depends on the Board of Elections. But if there are any, NOPEC will cover those if you join after the voters approve it.
All right. Just want to make sure of that since it would have got a help to township for, say, as far as us on the price of the gas, if it was going to cost us any dollars or not, so...
That's a great question. That's why they won't pay for it.
What was the other one we discussed, Tom?
By the way, I understand that if it fails, if it does cost us any money, well, that's true, it's going to be out of our pocket.
No, they'll...they'll cover it.
If it fails, it's all some trouble.
Yeah. If it passes and you choose someone else, like Medina County did?
Oh, is that right?
Right? So, you know, it's an equal effort, so to speak. Because there will be a separate vote to join NOPEC if the voters approve it, you have...in other words, your...your choice to join, so the ballot is just for the voters to give you the general authority to do this. How you do it is the result of those two public required public hearings that will be held, that NOPEC will cover any costs associated with that, and also staff those after the vote. So, in other words, the ballot, the voters give you general authority, then how you do it requires public hearings afterwards so that the voters can have details if they wish as to how you're going to do it, which means who you're going to choose to supply the gas, that you've now given them the right to bid on their behalf.
The other question that I just thought we discussed, your board members. The other question that I just thought we discussed, your board members, if us as Moning County, no matter how many townships are involved, you're basically get together, our association, pick one board member, is that correct?
The, um, the entity, the local government entities that join NOPEC get to choose. If, if you wish to make that happen through a association meeting, or other functions of the association, that's up to you, but what NOPEC wants to know is from the members of NOPEC, who do you want to choose? So, not everybody in the association is also a NOPEC member.
Correct, right, so, what, I guess, but each township that will pass this resolution and do this, each one will get a board member, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, now, are you adding to the board, or does someone come off the board?
Add to it.
So, there's no limitations on how many board members you can have, except for those.
I believe, if I'm not ragged with my own eyes, the bylaws of NOPEC require an entity from the county also has a seat on the board directors. Yeah, so, for instance, Huron County, the only political subdivision, local government in Huron County is the city Norwalk, and so they choose who represents, who has the Huron County seat, even though they're the only entity, as an example. So, Smith has passed it, Springfield has passed it, uh, Jackson, Milton, I mean, is likely tomorrow night. Tomorrow night? Yeah, tomorrow night. Knox has, Butler has, I just left Perry, they intend to vote on the twenty-eighth of July, to put it on the ballot. So, we are getting that bit of a critical mass that's helpful to voters, and have regional meetings to explain the program prior to the vote.
What did Green say on that?
Um, they felt there was not enough gas, UCG Green, that there'd be too many people voting on it that would not, uh, have, uh, do not have gas, but, of course, I countered with, well, those that do have gas are not gonna have this opportunity now.
Where'd you went out with Jackson, I knew that was an issue up there.
Um, the by precinct, um, was, did not come up in discussion with Jackson. It was, uh, also, um, I think, how many would be voting on it, and how many actually had gas in the homes, but we did get clarification, as I kinda suspected, um, you cannot do it by precinct.
Okay, before we discussed on this?
Yeah, my kinda, Brendan and I had had some different thoughts on that, as I, 'cause we're not sure how Medina County got it passed, and Medina County did it by precinct, so I guess it's, uh, all depending on how you convince the local prosecutor, and whether PUCO's paying attention.
So, what he's saying, like, precinct one and three passes it, but two doesn't, it's still gonna pass it? I mean, considering...
It's a total vote of the township, yes. Reason we brought that up in Jackson was, is we were talking with the trustees, they're really the only natural guess that they have, per se, in Jackson, is in the village, in Jackson.
Yeah, Larry has very, very few homes, yeah.
Yes, they don't have, they don't have, we have, what they were telling me, you know, so they were wondering if they could just do the one precinct alone, and not do the rest of the township, that's why it's come about, if it was clarified, so, we may have it now.
Has to be a township regenerative.
Rob, let's create a part down there, which has been natural gas, you've got a lot of boots there.
Yeah, I mean, well, we, we came up with, we had the figures of the last meeting, it's just about fifty, it's still about fifty, fifty-one percent of our homeowners have natural gas.
According to two thousand census records, with most easily readily available data, six hundred and thirty-nine homes had gas out of one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine total occupied housing units.
Right, so, that's a hundred percent.
Which is pretty good.
Yeah.
Got a little loophole, I'll get on there, of course.
Yeah.
Isn't that our development, up here, that's all? I'll make a motion that we, uh, put, uh, the gas aggregation on the ballot.
No second motion? You have a call vote, Mr. Hanyes?
Yes.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
I'll have you assign this later, because I'm gonna put some names in the SPOs.
Okay, and why, you're gonna lead us all the way through it, so...
Thank you.
Appreciate that, yeah, you're welcome. Okay, and we discussed a little bit diagonal road, uh, didn't get completed, uh, it was a very good job, but we did have an issue with roads, um, Saturday, you have the...
I got it, it's either way, it was less than twelve hours, twenty-four hours after we completed the job, we had a local farmer travel the road, knowing full well, most people could see the loose stone signs up and the barrels we put up, it was freshly chipped, and, uh, they managed to tear up a fifty-foot long section by twenty-one foot wide, and that's not something that's just easily passed, we have to go in there and get all the dirt out of what they churned up, and to patch that so we don't tear it up with the snow fly, we have to patch the full entire section full wet, so we don't start ripping chunks out of it, and I got a price from the contractor to put it down, using the same material to match, we still have some stone we purchased, we'd be using our truck and our roll gate spreader to patch that small area, the price from the contractor was five hundred dollars to spray the emulsion, and bring the roller down to roll that, but you figure with the stone, uh, use of our truck and our labor, depending upon how long it takes us to clean and prepare the area, it's gonna be around eight hundred dollars to a thousand dollars to repair that little section that got tore up. Like I said, we have, well, I gave you the figures, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in that stretch of road, and I wasn't real happy when I went down through there and saw that, after putting that much money in that road, it got ripped up from one little mistake. So, I personally feel that, I mean, leave it up to you guys, but Tom keeps saying our budget's really tight, and do you guys wanna be forking out the money to fix that, or do you wanna enforce the, uh, people that were traveling the road and tore it up?
My thought is, is someone, one of the should go, take copies of bills, what we estimate the cost is gonna be, and go discuss it with them and see what their point of view is before pushing it, so, sit down and discuss it, and show them how, what it is, uh, or you can meet them there, whatever, to really discuss it, I, I feel that, in my opinion, they should at least pick up what we've got out, my EK is, uh, you know, I might be only our equipment in time, but I don't need that five hundred dollars a year that's gonna charge at all, I might.
If they're running, if they're feeling, if an angle probably happened to be spinning in, with the, with that drive, it's, you know, it's pretty funny sense.
'Cause not only was I a little upset, there was multiple residents on that road that were highly upset, due to the fact that it's been such a rough road for so long, and now we get it fixed, and it wasn't even fixed for a day, and it was ripped up again.
True, but, I mean, we all know...
Well, yeah, 'cause, you know, most of the routing was down one sixty-five and up Duck Creek, and why they come that way?
'Cause the day we were chipping, they ran one sixty-five to Duck Creek all day long. I'm not against them running our roads, it's just upsetting when we put that much money into a road, and it gets ripped up less than twenty-four hours after it was finished. Ultimately, you guys have the final decision on what we do, but I have the prices, and that cost is, uh, they're gonna be chipping in Beaver Township in a couple weeks, so that cost is for them to swing by on their way to or from while they're down here, so they don't have to mobilize just to do that repair.
Make this happen, 'cause they're gonna pull a roller and hold the truck.
I think, no matter what, we need to set up a prayer to get it, because we want them to meet in the, the motion to do that, so if we need to do that, I have it fixed, but we're gonna need to discuss it with, uh, concerned farmer, and see how they feel, and I, I know how it's gonna go, but, but, if you want me to do it, I have no problem, but, you know, you wanna handle it.
Well, I think they ought to fix it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't, I think probably two of us, or all three of us ought to go confirm, but that's my opinion, yeah.
The one thing is, is we have maybe a public meeting, and just two of us should go.
Yeah.
So, if one of us goes, you don't have that issue, but if Tom and you go, make it...
Well, I think one of us should go then, and we ought to just tell him he did, to fix it when she's coming through, uh, they stormed terribly, well, it, it should be fixed either way, whether they pay or not.
We gotta always fix it, I think, yeah, that, I think we can push the issue out.
Yeah, it's just the fact that, you know, Jim's gonna have to run the roll bar probably two and a half times, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to run it.
And they're gonna have to spray the whole road, and otherwise, you know, to just try to fix them roofs, you're gonna have a bump in here to whatever, but if they do the whole thing, she feels it's gonna cover it up, so...
I'll make a motion for Jim to go over it, and whatever it takes to repair, and she already quoted the price for the five hundred, what do we have to do on your side to make it back, and I think we need to get up and talk, and soon enough, help me down there and do something.
Well, you know, yeah, because they had that planned, and it didn't survive the weather, you know, and they put another coat of manure in, and usually they work the manure, and I'm sure that's when it happens, when they come down to work the manure, you know, to make them aware of, you know, and it is, you know, if they were to win in a week from now, it might not happen, but the tar, the emulsion wasn't completely cured, I'm sure.
That's the problem now, I can't fix it, the emulsion's cured, I can't heat it up, I can't rake it out, I can't do anything with it, it's, it's stuck there, and if we don't fix it, it's gonna create holes right where the tread pattern is.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor, no second motion?
Yeah, roll call vote, Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Mr. Beeson, press.
Yes.
Yeah, and I did get confirmation about four o'clock in the session, he will be here for August eleventh, he asked me some of the concerns, he asked me a lot of some of the basics, and told him to talk with you guys, if you want, maybe go around, look at some roads or some issues before the meeting. Do that earlier, if you guys wanna do that, I'll contact you.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know how many of our roads he's got, uh, he's got the best riding vehicle, who gets worse riding vehicle? But, yeah, there's, there's a lot of issues out there, so, I don't know, so, you guys know one of them, one of them's got some on the agenda, Tom has been working, our phone system's here, we get a lot of static, a lot of noise, a lot of issues, uh...
We've got an internet on there that's extremely slow, we're paying really big bucks for an internet that's terrible, and a lot of scratchiness in the, in the, in the phone calls, sometimes you can't hear people, sometimes you get a lot of, almost sounds like a wind blowing in the background or something, and you can't hear, uh, I've talked to AT&T, and they said that if we went to a voice over IP system, we get cut across about five hundred bucks a month, and then we require a new phone system, and we've got, uh, a current contractor, Datacom, uh, we're talking to them about a new phone system, and it looks like we can get something to pay it off in fifteen to eighteen months, have a new system with better quality voice and faster internet, and be ahead in eighteen months from now, we'd be saving a bunch of money.
And I talked with another phone contractor, uh, and he told that phone system was about a very good price, uh, I asked him for the same number, fifteen phones, and told him the price probably sixty-two, or something.
It probably will go up when we get specific, but...
But he, he told his, it cost him about twelve thousand, just a bit, three to six thousand range, and, you know, really good, he called Datacom, they're also very good. I mean, they have been as well, you know, so we just work there with them for it.
The other thing about the voicemail system is every time somebody gets up, moves to a different desk, you've gotta switch your phone system to a different number, or, and if you change it to a different number, that's still Bob, even though Fred's sitting there now, if you try to move the phone number to the new desk, you gotta have the guy come in the data bomb and program the computer, and that's, I don't know, what does he charge, fifty bucks an hour, or whatever it is, to come in and do that, we can do that with a new voicemail system, which is part of this quote, and do it ourselves, so we'd have a whole lot more control over names and extension numbers, and as people move around, they're constantly moving around.
We'll call the meeting with, uh, the next one we serve, so, we'll have more on that next meeting.
I don't have a good idea about the savings, plus, you know, this stuff that's not working, right? It does seem something, we'll get nicer.
Yeah, I guess we'll have any more.
I'm gonna just say, Jim called, he's done on there, he'll write another, the incident that happened Saturday, yeah, I think we're doing it right.
That's very good, yes, yeah. All right, our next meeting, the August eleventh, two thousand fourteen, so we're clear, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Roll call vote, Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanyes?
Yes.
Mr. Cracker?
Yes.
Jackson, sign.